Okay, everyone, well, welcome to the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three joint work session of the City Council, also acting as the redevelopment agency. Oh, there's another, thank goodness, have welcome. We were really happy to see you regardless, but um please let the record reflect that we have all council members present with council member White online. Would you like to say hello?
Hello, I'll be there in a minute.
Oh, I like your new picture. Um, and we have Vice Chair Ritchie, who's asked to be excused. And then I believe Councilmember Lopez will be here. I don't, I haven't gotten another message, you know. Okay, yeah, we believe he'll be coming, but he's not here right now. And so we can go ahead and review the agendas here of each meeting. For the City Council meeting, um, we've got some minutes to approve, and then we also have the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One. If anybody has any questions or concerns about that one. And then we have the exciting appointment of Management Services Director, Mayor Caldwell will be doing that. We will take public input for that item, too. I don't think it's on the agenda, but we will do that. And then we'll have public comments. And then, um, for the Special Redevelopment Agency Meeting, um, we have the consideration of going into a closed session. And then we have proposed real estate purchase contract for seventeen eighty-one Gibson Avenue. Now leave it up to you all if you feel the closed session is necessary before the item.
Meaning have a discussion in there or just vote no when it's when it comes up for a vote?
This depends on if you'd like to have a closed session in that meeting. We would come back in here probably if we had the.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious, how did you want to determine whether or not we have it?
So you could either vote no if somebody makes a motion for the closed session, or somebody could make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Okay, that was my question.
But we're open to either choice. Okay, so we have a pretty, looks like a pretty busy um work session here. At first, we're invite Brandon to talk with us about proposed zone text amendment, high impact use standards in the C two CP two zones. Some more initials for me. Make sure you turn your mic.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Madam Chair and Council. So today we have a proposal for a text amendment to the C two CP two. Chapter of the zoning ordinance. So just a little background, the C two CP two zone is, um, the district is meant to provide a variety of retail. Services and uh goods to the the general public, um, basically the the community that surrounds those zones. It's also typically found along major streets and is supposed to have a low uh likelihood for conflict with other surrounding uses such as residential or um other, I guess, office or um those types of uses. So and it um it's typically found along the edges of residential properties. So this map, there's actually three maps that show where the C two zone is located. And so what I did is I mapped out where um the residential zone properties are in regard to the C two zoning. And so you can see the majority of the C two zoning um is is right next to the residential zones.
Chair, could I ask a question at this point? It's just, it's just uh technical. Is there any remaining distinction between a C two and a CP two anymore?
No. Yeah, so the P, yeah, the P required a planning commissioner review, but there's no distinction anymore. So it really is just the same zone.
Okay, I wondered if we could clean that up while we're at it.
Oh.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it, you know, I, it's just the weirdness in me, I think, yeah, clean up these little weirdy, weirdy things that are around. And I know it's, it's been, I, I thought it was that way for a long time. It's been that way for a while, so.
Yep. But yeah, I was confused at beginning as well, trying to figure out what, why is this P included in this? So so these, these maps show where the C two zone is located within Ogden City's boundary. And like I said, the majority of the the zoning is surrounded by residential zones or residentially zone properties. So the reason we're discussing this today is the Planning Commission received a request for conditionally used to do a automatic car wash that was adjacent to residential property. And the state law basically says that anytime you have a conditional use, it's treated similar to permitted use it. The Planning Commission reviews it and determines what the impacts of the use are, whether or not those can be mitigated. In this case, the Planning Commission determined that the impacts were too great and that they could not be mitigated. And so that's why it was um denied, which caused us to um look into, you know, what are the uses that are allowed in the C two zone? And are there other uses that also have similar impacts to residential zones? So um, that's kind of how we got here. So when they looked at the automatic car wash, some of the things that they found were there's a lot of noise caused by the dryers, uh, the vacuums constantly run. Um, there's a lot of traffic generated by these uses. And a lot of the automatic car washes that are being proposed are fairly large, um, historically. I mean, well, I don't know about historically, but probably, you know, a car wash that was developed twenty years ago was fairly small in size. But these ten, these new car washes tend to generate a lot of traffic. There's issues with people playing their radios really loud while they're vacuuming out their cars. So that could, that is, or that's one of the issues that was brought up when we met with the Planning Commission. And hours of uh operation, um, a lot of them open, you know, as early as, well, some probably open as early as six AM. And they close um at ten PM. So that's also a huge impact to the residents. Lighting is also another one. Um, some of the car washes have lighting on the vacuums uh systems and just they can kind of become a real nuisance. So as I said before, we.
Ask another question.
You bet.
I'm, I am really sorry.
No worries.
You know, ha- having been a planning commissioner, I kind of see things through that lens sometimes and uh my understanding, and and this, this where I need some enlightenment, I think, is, you know, when we're talking about impacts that meet our legal standard of noise and and lights and and hours and things of that nature. How can a planning commission say, well, okay, our standards aren't good enough for this spot? I, I mean, that's what I really don't understand. I mean, i- if it were, I mean, I had a neighbor that was doing a garage band thing and it was really bad.
Okay.
You know, and uh, but, but the, the police probably said, well, no, they're allowed. It's, it's legal. What they did is legal. And so just get used to it. So I, I just want, want to know what the distinction is, and I also know that sometimes uh all of us are, are subject to public clamor. And planning commissions are not allowed to be.
Right, for sure.
So can you talk?
Yeah, so I mean, as we looked into, I mean, specifically car washes, uh, we found that they're just oh fairly, they really impact the residents. Um, the, we had a resident that talked about his experience with a car wash in Ogden City, and he talked about that, you know, there's constant noise from the vacuum systems if they're not well maintained, that they're um they're constantly oper- the vacuums are constantly pressurized. And so he said, you know, even they turn on the vacuums even before they even open up for business. He also talked about the, the noise from the dryers that they, you know, push noise out the building. Um, he lives almost three hundred feet away from the car wash and said that he can hear it from inside his house. Let's see what else. So, yeah, so after looking at this specific use, our recommendation was to require or categorize this as well as other uses as high-impact land uses if they're adjacent to residential zone property. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it did. You, you just missed the pass. I think, you know, that's that I, this, what you're doing is exactly, well, you know, in, in relationship to the things that I kind of brought up. It, it, we need to take it out of the, you know, the reactionary mode of the planning commission. If, if, if the things you say are true, which I believe they are, then we need to make a standard.
Right.
Makes it so it is not a conditional use permit.
Correct.
So that's, that's where I'm thinking. So maybe that's, is that where you were going to?
Yeah, that's where it's going. Yeah, they found that uh they didn't have much tools when they were looking at as a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
And so they're looking at, let's, let's give ourselves better tools.
Yeah, I was, I was so, I was really shocked that they voted the way they did based on our current to, you know, what we got.
Yeah.
But, but all these things are true, so.
So this is the standard that you're referring to, right?
Yeah, this is what, this is the standard that I think we're kind of trying to come up with so that it doesn't have to come in as a conditional use.
Yeah, the Planning Commission requested a pending ordinance so that we could review all the uses in the C two zone and um originally, we're just looking at the car wash, but then there are other uses that we felt also were considered high-impact land uses if they're close enough to uh residential uses, so. Um, so this is the list that we came up with uh after reviewing the the land use chart. So there are things like animal hospital with outdoor channeling, um automobile service stations, bus terminals, car washes. Gymnasiums can cause uh significant traffic. And so there's a list of, of all these, and we'll go through this a little bit more, but in land use table, we've placed a footnote on those specific uses so that if um someone wants to do that specific use, they'd be notified that there are, there are potential mitigation measures that would be required if it's within a hundred feet of a residential zone. And in the case of a car wash, if it's within three hundred feet of a residential zone, then it would, um, sorry, if it's five, within five hundred feet of a residential zone, a car wash would be considered a high-impact land use. But the car wash cannot be closer than three hundred feet to a residential zone based on um our proposal. Did I confuse you? Let me go through it real quick. So this is what the ordinance would, would do. So for high-impact land uses, anytime that use is proposed within a hundred feet of a residential zone, it would be considered a high-impact land use, and it would be required to do things like a noise study. Um, it would have to show that the entrance is at least a hundred feet from a residential zone property. We would look at building openings um to, to reduce those. Um, we'd look at outdoor activities if those, such as like the vacuum systems, or if there's outdoor fitness um that happens as part of a gymnasium, we'd look at all those things. And there's a new table that we're proposing that we would use to review these uses under. Um, and then, as I talked about the automatic car wash, so though the proposal would be to not allow those within three hundred feet of residential zone if it's within that C two zone. And we would require that the openings or the, or the entries, so the exit and entrance of the car wash is not oriented uh towards the residential zone properties, we would require an onsite manager. We would also require the decibels uh to be limited to sixty-five decibels at the residential property line. We'd require signage for the, uh, it would be placed on the building next to the vacuums, that basically requests that the customers limit their uh, the volume of their stereos. And then we also would propose that there's the ability to switch the vacuums on and off when they're in use, so.
Would I need this be um something that we could use to help? Like the car wash that the person was bringing that, to help encourage them to put up additional mitigation things like a fence, like I just think that could really help that residence.
Yeah, so there are screening requirements that.
By asking like the ones that are already in existence, could any of this be used?
Oh. Only if they're doing an expansion or a significant change to the property, that's when it would kick in. Otherwise, they would be grandfathered. So I wish, but yeah, any new car washes would be held to the new standard. Unless, yeah, there's significant changes to the property. Or if it is a nuisance, um, you always have that. So if, if someone is not meeting the current ordinance, let's say, like the noise um standards, then we could require them to do things to mitigate that impact.
Yeah, I mean, it's just so challenging because it's intermittent. I mean, they do hear it continuously, but it doesn't meet those thresholds.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah.
Such.
Just real quick, and when you're talking residential, you mean including apartments?
Correct, so any residential zone, not just single family.
Okay.
Yep. So this is a map that shows or demonstrates where um car washes, an automatic car wash could be located. The um, you can kind of see a dark gray around the outside of the, the yellow property. That's actually a hundred feet, that's a hundred foot buffer, and then the lighter gray is a three hundred foot buffer from uh those residential zone properties. So an automatic car wash would be able to be within that the red, the bright red area. Um, so that's what we are proposing. The Planning Commission.
It's like maybe.
Are they, are they allowed in any other zone, a C three or?
Yes.
C one or most, no C ones, though, right?
Um, C one, the, you can have the manual, I'm trying to remember on the.
Just a bay type car wash, I mean, okay.
But yeah, the CP three does allow for car washes, and wouldn't, they wouldn't have the same limitations as the CP two. The, so the Planning Commission proposed to adopt the zone or the zone, adopt the proposed ordinance, and they voted eight to one. The one planning commissioner felt like there should be more restrictions and that we didn't necessarily need more car washes in the, the C two zone.
That's another discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um, the original proposal uh was to basically remove all of the, the land uses that we would consider high-impact if they were within a hundred feet of a residential zone. So if someone said, oh, I wanted to do uh a outdoor batting cage and the property was within a hundred feet, that was the original pro- proposal was to say, no, we don't allow those within a hundred feet. But like I said, after we reviewed the location of the sorry, hit the down button. After we reviewed um the land uses in the C two zone, there are substantial amount of those land uses that are high-impact land uses. And that would basically remove those options from the C two zone. So our proposal is rather than remove the ability to do those land uses within a hundred feet of a residential zone, we would require additional mitigation if they are within a hundred feet of that residential zone. So this, these maps just show um land uses that have things like uh loading and unloading docks or drive, drive-in restaurant or auto repair. So there are a lot of those types of uses, but we would propose that if those are adjacent to a residential use, that they be held to a higher standard. So the land use chart would have this this one, this footnote attached to the use, and that would notify the, the applicant that's proposing to you or propose this use on the property, that there are additional mitigation measures. The existing code does have some protection for uh residential uses that are adjacent to commercial or industrial. The code amendment would um would have this additional language that states that if it's in the C two zone and it's within, within a hundred feet of a residential zone, that the high-impact land use would have to meet the additional mitigation measures. So these are the existing um mitigation standards, and it really is, there are options for screening. Um, so if there's lighting, noise, privacy, these were meant to address those issues, but we felt like we could improve on those. And so we've actually added some additional items to the existing screening options. So if there's, let's say, a drive-through that has, um, you know, a lot of, or a stacking lane, they would be required to um provide, you know, a landscape buffer, or if there's, um, originally it just said service entrance, we wanted to also include an exit, they would, they would be required to provide additional um screening. So there are a few things that we added, and then there's a footnote on this table A that uh notifies the, the person proposing the use that they, they may be held to some additional standards. So these, this is a new table that is proposed, it's table C, and it is high-impact use mitigation when adjacent or when near, sorry, near residential zones. So we're looking at things like uh site access. So if it's a high-impact use that has a lot of traffic, we would require the entrance and exit to be at least a hundred feet from a residential property line. Uh, we would look at the building openings. So if it's, let's say, a car wash, um, we may require that there are no openings on one side of the building that is adjacent to that um residential zone. So there, these are um all of the items that we would look at if it fell under that high-impact land use.
Brandon, what, what's the definition of a laundry style?
So it's, that's an automatic car wash. It's just a.
I thought we just called those tunnels tunnel style. I, I guess I was confused. So I, that's, I'm, is that in the definitions?
Uh, I'm not sure actually if it is defined in the definitions.
You better put it there.
Yeah. Well, we have manual car wash, and then we have laundry style car wash. So.
Well, it'll be in the definitions.
Yeah, let me double check that.
You're gonna get a, a problem with it.
Just thought you cleaned your car and you're close at the same time. Let's, you just pull it, put your windows down and go through it.
Yeah.
What is like the um, the ones that have a person there, but then it is also kind of automatic? Is that automatic?
Yeah, that would still be considered automatic.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Might as well clarify.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
That's why I was confused.
For, okay, so this was another.
Automatic.
So, one of the changes we, we made while we're going through the planning commission review. Was to add a second footnote for laundry style. Car washes that, that says that they are not allowed within three hundred feet of a property that's zoned residential. But if it's, if the property is zoned residential, but it's a non-residential use on the property. Then they would still, they would not be required to be three hundred feet from that use, does that make sense?
Yeah, kind of, but you've got this addendum C that says five hundred feet.
Right, so the, yeah, the five hundred feet is basically saying that if. If the car wash is further than five hundred feet from residential zone. It would not be considered a high impact land use. Cause it's so far away from residential that it wouldn't have impacts. But we wouldn't allow it to be any closer than three hundred feet to residential zone. This map shows, so I mapped where all of the car washes are located in, in Ogden. Some of them. Well, most of them are in the C two zone, so they would be able to continue to operate as they're operating now. Any new car washes would be held to this three hundred foot standard. So those areas that are bright red would be available for an automatic car wash.
Another question, that one that's on. Washington, just north of Five Points. It's commercial to both sides, and then there's a pretty steep hill behind it. Is the topography a mitigator?
We would look at that, so if it, it fell under the high impact land use, yeah, we would look at that, we wouldn't. Well, I mean, we'd have to look at the buffer too. I think, yeah, we would.
I think the zone is right, the, the residential zone is right there, but nothing built because of that hill.
And we may need to put something in the code that says if there are any significant. Different, or not different, yeah, geographic, cause that does make a huge difference as far as noise, so.
Well, that's already there too, I'm assuming that they're gonna be legal non-conforming anyway, so. I just, it just occurred to me that maybe there's some other mitigation.
Something in there that says, there's something that we didn't.
So is that red property, is that where the old Jakes, is that the old Jakes property? Where a car wash tried to go?
Yeah, so the, let me see if I can pull up the. So Jakes, let's see, so.
Across the street from the other manual laundry style car wash. Right on Country Hills?
Oh, correct, yeah, Country Hills, so, yeah, Country Hills would be. Right here. And Jakes, yeah, Jakes over the top would be within that three hundred foot buffer. Cause it's right next to a single family zone property.
We, we go back to the map prior again? Neither of these are in the packet, right?
Oh, yeah.
They're not.
They're, oh, they're not in the packet?
I don't think so.
Oh, I thought I did include the.
What's on the packet?
The buffer one isn't, is it?
Yeah, I got it on page twenty four.
Okay, sorry.
No worries, yep, okay. So yeah, our, our proposal would be to require any high impact land use within a hundred feet. Or a car wash within three hundred feet, up to five hundred feet. To meet these additional mitigation measures. There, and there is a specific section in the C two. Or the commercial chapter that does address automatic car washes, and so these are the changes that we would propose. To the existing section. So originally, the, the chapter stated that car washes should be. Forbidden between ten o'clock PM and six o'clock AM. And our proposal would be that they're limited to eight o'clock. PM to, or forbidden between eight PM and eight AM. So the hours would be reduced, so they'd be able to be open from eight AM to eight PM. In the C, C one and the CP two or C two zones, so in the C three zones, we would have no. Hours of opera, or limits on hours of operation, but within these. These two zones, we would limit the hours of operation because of the, the known impacts to residential zones. And then this is the location where it talks about the laundry style car wash, if it's. Less than five hundred feet to residential zone, it would be considered a high impact use. We also added the requirement for a noise study. And also for manual car washes if. If the mechanical equipment or vacuums or dryer systems or queuing and exit lanes are within. Are, are, sorry, they are not allowed within fifty feet of a residentially zoned property, so that would. Not be part of the automatic car washes because they're already. Required to be three hundred feet from a residential zone, so that would only apply to the manual car washes. And then also the entrance and exit to a tunnel or car wash. Shall be oriented away from residentially zoned property. We also would require an onsite manager to make sure that all of the equipment is operating properly. And so that if there is a nuisance that it can be addressed quickly. We also require that the vacuums. Not exceed sixty five decibels within a hundred feet of the property line. And that the equipment receive regular maintenance. We also added the C two C or the C two. To number three, that limits the number of car wash bays for a manual car wash. So, that's everything that we had in the, the proposed amendment. And staff would recommend that the city council adopt the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment.
One more question.
You bet.
Maybe at least one, how do they do a, a sound study with nothing there? With the force there, I just don't understand how you gotta require that.
That is a good point, I mean, a lot of the car washes have other existing. Car washes in other cities, so that's, that's how I would imagine that we would require that, but yeah, if they're the first car wash.
That's gonna be hard to get the first, you know, which. Because of the study, it's gonna be hard to do, so.
Yeah, that is a good point.
Well, and I think, you know, some of the challenges that people have is that it's when, like, the vacuums aren't put away exactly the right way. Then it has the high risk, yeah, or if somebody pulls up and has really loud music, you know, it's like these sort of. Intermittent kind of things versus like just going on all day, every day, all the time, you know, it's kind of a challenge.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, you're, the last thing you said about, you know, requiring the decibel level at the property line, those are all pretty reasonable. I think, I think most people, I think. These vacuums and even the, even the blowers could, could be mitigated if they. If they were found to exceed those things.
Yeah, they could put up a fence or do something.
Yeah, I remember when Quick Quack Quack came in and was proposing for North Street, they were saying, well, yeah, we can, we can have a turn, we can. And it would face south instead of west and. You know, I, I, I know that there's lots of different varieties of.
And even building materials, we found some, some of those block have the insulated. There's a portion of the material that's insulated, so reduces the vibration and noise that exit the, the structure.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think the, the sound study is probably not. They just need to be, they need to be comfortable that they can meet the, the sound requirements.
Right, unless then people have a thing, something to go back to to say, well, it's not meeting that, so.
Just wanted to say for the record that. Buffer map is not in the packet, it's in the presentation. I did read my packet.
I can provide that to everyone. So you'll have that anyway, okay?
We got that. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't answer the right question, sorry, Ben. Make my, put myself on play dumb, don't eat out.
Any other questions or comments?
This is a random, not somewhat related question. Does this kind of stuff get fixed with the general plan?
Well, we could, not necessarily general plan, it's because it's zoning. But we could, we'll look at commercial areas, what areas are appropriate for commercial.
And are we going through a zoning? Ordinance makeover?
Yeah, right now we are.
Trying to throw yourself on me.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
You know, if I, if I could just say, I, I, I am really glad you're doing this. Because I think it really put our planning commission in a, in an awkward place. When they're, they're obviously probably shouldn't approve something, but other than that, it's legal. There needs to be some tools, and I'm glad you're thinking outside the box and figuring out the. That this is, I can't think of a better way to deal with those issues.
Oh, good, thank you. Yeah, so with the updates to the zoning, the, well, we're looking at all the development code, but. The zoning, we're gonna look at all the land uses within the zoning ordinance. So this is, this will help as part of that, but there may be other uses that we. Propose either be added to zones or taken out of zones, so.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
The next steps on this one?
So it is a pending, part of a pending ordinance, so the deadline is November fourteenth. So we would need to review it prior to that.
Concerns about that?
Ju- just those few little tweaks that I saw, I hadn't seen anything else, though.
Okay, awesome, well, thank you, yep, thanks.
Thanks so much. Well, we're very excited to welcome Kevin Brown, our fire marshal, to talk with us on the next two items, I'm not sure if Chief Matthew, if you'd like to say anything as well. About the nuisance fire alarm ordinance and the proposed amendments to the fire.
Two, easily take one, I'll take one.
Great, so are you at first with the nuisance fire alarm?
Yeah, come on, Kevin, cause we'll just go right into both of them, hopefully, I, I know they're separate items. But thank you, council chair and council members for. Entertaining this consideration, under the, the nuisance fire alarms and the false fire alarms, we're proposing. To give us a tool to deal with these particular problems and, and they don't come up very often, but I can tell you they, they do occur and. I can tell you that we currently have one facility that in the last year we've responded to just over fifty times. With nuisance or false fire alarms, and the problem with that is, is twofold, once or, or one is our firefighters get complacent and. Think that there's not a problem here because we're going here once a week on, on alarms that don't. Provide any, any true emergency, but more importantly, it's the tenants that I'm concerned with is because they get complacent as well. Because they get tired of hearing the alarms and they just don't respond to them, they'll just ignore them. This one particular facility we've been trying to deal with, we had two very disturbing things, we learned about it. One, the management actually explained to the tenants how to turn off the alarm system when it went off. And so instead of them being there and managing, dealing with it, they, they knew they were a nuisance to them, so they taught the tenants on how to just deactivate them. Secondly, when we sat down to discuss with them and said that the state of condition of this alarm system just to point. Where it's to the end of the life, needs to be replaced, needs some attention because it's just malfunctioning way too often. They said, that's not our problem, that's your problem, you need to respond to all the alarms if they're occurring or not. And we, we were a little disappointed in that. And fortunately, with this particular facility, we were able to get to some additional people through the help of CED and, and. Some of the boss's boss, so to speak, and they were quite concerned about the number of false alarms and thought that something should be done with it. So we believe we're gonna get some activity on this particular building, and we're gonna check back in November to make sure that. We're getting the kind of activity we need to rectify the malfunctioning nature of this system. But what this ordinance would do is give us some tools, first of all. If you had in a three hundred and sixty-five day period, two false alarms. We would issue you a warning, depending on the nature of what the false alarm is, if it's just someone. Just pulling the alarm, that might be a tenant, we might advise the management or ownership to see if they can, can't. You know, deal with that behavior, if it becomes habitual, how they can deal with that. We wouldn't necessarily hold them responsible for a tenant's behavior, but more importantly, in the ones that we've ran into, we ran into this with another one of a year and a half ago. The system was malfunctioning and it just took a whole lot of encouragement to get them to do anything about. Getting this system into a better state of condition, and so having this tool to say here, you'll get two vi- two violation notices. On the first two, on the third one, fourth and fifth, we would actually issue a citation, the third one would. It's a citation that the fine would be up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, second one would be, I believe, two fifty. The third and many more after the third would be five hundred, just so it be, it would get progressively wor- worse. Just in order to get their attention, to try to get their system functioning properly, because. Once again, it's not only our behavior they're worried about, it's most importantly, the behavior of the tenants in the building, because. If it goes off too reg- too often, too regularly, they'll just ignore the system, and then that presents a significant problem if we do have a true emergency. With evacuation and all the resources that are needed to try to get the building evacuated if we truly do have a fire. And so this is why we're using this, there's, there's a lot of words in here that say may result in. And so it would give us the opportunity to kind of evaluate the situation, if they're working on it and working with us to, to repair it. Extended period of time to get that taken care of, sometimes you run into supply chain issues, those kinds of things. Sometimes it's like we're securing financing, we're gonna replace the whole system, it's pretty significant in nature, in terms of cost. But if you work with us, we'll get it done by X period of time, so it gives us a little bit of latitude to be flexible with issuing those, those citations. Depending on how responsive they are to the violations. And so that's the overview of it, we've just added it within the amendment of the negligently caused fire ordinance and we. Would entertain any questions or thank you for considering this adjustment.
So Chief, I, I just wanna know, maybe you don't know, they, maybe you do know the answer to this, so not all that long ago, we. We changed our ordinance for police calls. What if one of these is from a, you know, a home? You know, security system or something like that, how do, how does that work, I mean, I, I'm assuming you're talking about, you know, something like this, but. How does that?
This, this affects only if I remember right, it only affects if it's more than one dwelling. And so it, it wouldn't be for a private residence, it wouldn't affect private residents. And we actually looked into, because of, we understood with the police, they decided on the single family residents that are having burglary alarms, they decided just not to respond anymore. Because of the number of either malfunctioning or no true emergency occurring, sucking up resources. We looked and we, we were waiting to hear back from Las Vegas, cause we'd heard that they had dealt with this issue and, and determined somehow. That they were just not gonna respond, similar to like what our police department did and. And rather than doing that, we would much rather try to work with the owners to make sure we get the system functioning properly. One of the other tools we could use beyond the fine system is we could actually, this is, this is the. Most significant action we could take is we could actually pull their certificate of occupancy. And cause them to vacate the building. Because they don't have the proper fire protection system in working order, we hope to never have to resort to that, but it could be a recourse that we, we could. Do if we were getting just no attention and, and really it's about the tenant's safety, it's not about us trying to give the ownership. Management a hard time over a system, it's just, this thing needs to be working properly, because especially with multi-level occupancies, they need time to get out. And they need early notification, and if they get trapped inside, we've had that happen before. And, and it's, it's not very positive. So that's, that's the, the goal.
So, so simply safe systems, the, the little. So so simply safe systems, the the little, you know, these these kind of deals are not the issue with that.
Right.
Okay. You. So do these larger systems, do they require an alarm permit anyway? And some of those kind of deals?
Right. And what what we're seeing is these are some of the oldest that are still trying to be maintained in service, meaning that this system to give you an example of a modern day system that were installed and you had a uh cooking, smoking event in your apartment. Your smoke detector may go off, but the whole building doesn't get activated. And uh, but if a if a flow alarm occurs, meaning that uh water has actually coming out of a sprinkler head in your apartment, the whole building's notified because something significant's going on. And whereas this system is so antiquated and so old on this particular one that we've been dealing with recently, is it if that smoke alarm goes off in the kitchen because they burned some popcorn or toast or whatever, it just activates the whole system. The only, the all this system will do is activate the whole thing. So once again, another reason for people to ignore it and say, ah, somebody burnt some toast, ah, never mind. And so it's just, it's beyond its life expectancy.
I assume if if even if that happened, and then somebody calls the neighbor says, hey, there's smoke coming out of these guys' house. You're gonna go anyway.
Right, right.
Let me ask another question. Doesn't have much to do with alarms, but I I wondered if it was a problem um is not self-reported fires. In other words, somebody else reporting a fire over there. Is that, is that an issue?
Mm hmm.
I mean, somebody's out there smoking something on their trigger and
That happened last night.
We got fired. We got fire trucks.
Sounds really good, but it
Yeah, it happened last night. We had a call that came in as a structure fire and then we're halfway when our personnel were on their way. They said, no, we think it's just somebody with a barbecue in the backyard and the first engine got there and they shut everybody else down because of for safety reasons, meaning they stopped going lights and siren and the first unit checked out. So yet they're in the backyard cooking, but a neighbor thought because of the smoke, the house was on fire. So we we see that. It happens. Thanks.
I was just curious, you know, thinking about the appeal and it goes back to the enforcement officials. So I guess I'm just wondering and like sort of what is the lawfulness of that appeal process?
Um, from from our standpoint is if eh we believe that if if we've been unjust in terms of how we determine the faulty nature or the number of nuisance or false alarms that have occurred, that they have an opportunity to present at least their case to say, look, the fire marshal has said that he's asked us to turn off our system, which means that we're now going to have to vacate our building.
Right.
And during that hearing, is there, is there any other new information that comes forward that could say, could we do something different than that? And that's what we believe that the appeal process is for.
So it's kind of like a formal hearing? Oh, okay. It's good. Any other questions? All right, next item.
Thank you.
Fire property maintenance codes. Thank you.
Yeah, this next item, it's more of a uh housekeeping for current ordinance and how we adopt code. So the state is on a three-year cycle to adopt uh international fire code, international building code, uh property maintenance code, et cetera. But um several years ago, I think maybe in two thousand fifteen or seventeen, um, we went to a uh where that automatically gets adopted. So the state adopts the two thousand twenty-one code, Ogden City automatically adopts that as ordinance, the current issue. Um, current version of that code. Um, what we left out a couple of things, we kind of missed them, I think. Um, the appendices in the fire code, the state says, if you want to use the appendices, they have to be individually adopted by city ordinance. And we've always used those, um, but that did not get changed. And so currently, the ordinance reads that we're using the two thousand fifteen edition of the appendices. Uh, this this housekeeping change would change that to the current international fire code. And in addition to that, uh, it says appendices B, C, D, F, and H. Katie in legal recommended we change that to the actual titles of the appendices instead of the letters. So uh, if they change the order in the future version of the code, we would know which which uh appendices we actually want. Um, so that's the, that's the first piece of that cleanup. Any section, any questions on that?
I don't think so.
Um, number two is similar. This is a a building department issue, but the international property maintenance code also got forgotten and we're using the uh two thousand fifteen version of that. So that needs to be updated to the current edition. So this would change that to uh also automatically adopt the most recent edition of that code when the state adopts. Number three piece is a small change. It changes wording from inspection services to office of building services. Just to clean up that language. And then as part of that, the state of Utah gives twenty days for an appeal to a a notice of a dangerous building or uh any type of um written notice to a building owner. And right now in code, we have ten days. So that needs to just be changed to twenty to reflect current state law. Any questions on any of that?
I guess there's not much we can do about it since it's state law, but go ahead. Sorry, did you have a question? Oh, no, sorry.
Anybody want me to go through individually each of the appendices in the fire code? Just explain what they are. It's more exciting than car washes. Yeah, I guess. That was it for that one.
Great. Well, thank you both so much.
All right. Thank you.
Up next, we have our very own Janine Eller Smith, our executive director, to talk with us about the proposed compensation commission ordinance. It's very fancy.
Yeah. So I just really wanted to touch base again to make sure we're we're okay to move forward. I realized that I'd already actually reviewed this with you um at the end of August, but um just wanted to make sure we're um still all on the same page. So I have finalized a an ordinance uh working with legal. And so the the purpose uh would be to advise the council on compensation for elected officials, and that means uh salary and stipend. Um, for the appointment, they have to be at least twenty-one and uh a resident of or have strong ties with. That could be through employment or um business uh involvement in the community. Um, professional experience in finance, HR, corporate management, or a related field. So they have three-year staggered terms. Um, so when we're beginning, there would be, there's uh five that would be appointing. So three would be for three years. The other two would be for two years. And then uh after the two years finished theirs, then they would go to a three-year stagger term, uh a limit of three terms, so nine years. Um, and the council could provide a per diem if you want. That's that's pretty standard language in most of the committee uh ordinances that we have. And the vacancies would be filled in the same way as new appointees. So um just through the regular appointment process. Um, so they would review, review the results of the salary survey conducted by HR or a consultant, depending on how uh deep they wanted their information to go. Um, HR doesn't have really the manpower to to do much more than benchmarking uh the ci- the cities that we have identified as uh comparable cities. Um, so if if, for example, um, the commission wanted um, you know, information from across the United States of similar cities that we would have to hire a consultant to do that. Um, and so then uh Gary just thought it would be important to give him some kind of standards so they can compare the population, the location, um the age of the benchmark communities. So for example, a new community might be growing a lot faster and be dealing with different issues than uh than uh this council. Uh, the workload, uh maybe the number of meetings, uh the value of the impact of the work and and they can look at budget constraints, although that's that's really ultimately the council's decision, whether they agree with that or not. So uh their power and duty, so they would make the recommendations for salaries and stipends, the first meeting in April. I would, I'm, it also says that they would have two meetings uh in January and March. They can have more than that, but that would be sort of the minimum number of meetings plus this presentation. Um, the, their recommendations would not get adopted until you do finish the budget and adopt the salary schedules at the end of that process. Um, so that's when that would become effective and the new salaries uh are effective July one, as they always have been. So that's just a quick overview and just want to make sure we're still okay. I have a list of people. I waited to make sure we get this in place first, but I do have a list of people, recommendations from you all um that have contacted me. Um, so I'll be reaching out and I think we're going to us also issue a press release to see if anybody else wants to put that, throw their name in the hat to see if there's, they'd be interested in serving on the commission.
What is that one question? Um, just the in the appointment process, since it's kind of a council commission, how does that work differently than the mayor appointing people?
So we would just put together the names, I'd probably run them through leadership first, uh maybe run them and then we would just send them out just like we do for the mayors, except it would just come from council staff as opposed to uh the administrative staff. And then you could review them if we would send that out just like they do on a confidential basis initially. Um, and then if there's any concerns uh that you can share those with us and um then we could make some changes before we finalize them. Then they would just go on a consent agenda, just like they do now.
Good things. Any other questions?
I I'm I'm not. Why don't we careful how I say this, but I, you know, I'm not opposed to this philosophically, but it seems like we're adding just another level of bureaucracy and not getting really anything for it because in the end, the council asks uh has to vote for something. Um, HR is still doing the stuff HR is doing and we're not taking any work out of out of their process. Um, it seems like there is a risk of injecting some some personal bias in this thing somehow that maybe shouldn't ought to be there. Um, am I the only one that thinks that? Or is that? You know?
So when this recommendation first came up, probably almost eight years ago, um, I had those very same thoughts that, well, the information that the that a com- committee or commission would be looking at is going to be the same information that the council has. But I've just seen in the last couple of years how hard it is for council members to talk about salary for themselves and the mayor. And I, this is, this was just a way to address that. It's like, well, you know, you are leaning on recommendations from people in the community who have experience with this. Doesn't mean you have to accept them. Um, just like any other recommendations you get from the planning commission or anybody else. Uh, it just is a way to to get a baseline. So it's just, I'm just noticed it's been difficult to talk about it.
Well, you're you're right about that. I I was just thinking, you know, that this commission is seven people.
Five.
Five people to decide eight people's salary. It just seems like a little
I hear what you're saying, but I think, I mean, what I heard, um, you know, from many people. I mean, myself included. And sometimes you, I have my own bias about it as well. Because, you know, I certainly have strong feelings when um, you know, there was a large increase we gave to the full staff. And I was like, well, but I don't think necessarily we should do that, you know. So I think that sometimes our individual perspectives come into it, but I would have appreciated, I think, at that time to have kind of a more objective, neutral body to make some kind of recommendation because I think it, we do get put in a difficult position, especially if it's an election year.
Yeah.
Sometimes people might feel conflicted about it. And so for me, although it adds a layer, I think that it helps um community maybe to feel like they are involved in a different way too. But I think maybe you had something to say too. I saw you moving.
No, I mean, I I I've talked to Councilman higher about this. I I I understand. I feel the same way. I, it seems like we're bringing in a group to to handle, you know, eight people's salary. And and I don't, I mean, I don't know, I yeah, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just I I I I agree. I think it's it's adding another layer that that still puts it in our lap. We still have to make the decision. We still have to do what we want to do or what we feel is best. And so I um, I I appreciate the idea.
Too. I'm just trying to give the other side.
I, yeah.
Devil's advocate.
I I, the planning commission, I mean, I, and I'm not not saying that these these people wouldn't have an expertise in that either, but I mean, I think the planning commission, they they know the ins and outs of our planning and our zoning and 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 much more than I than I do ever.
Really happy we have them.
Yeah, than I ever will. Now, whether or not I want to dive into
Yeah.
what I make compared to what somebody else makes, or I I can do that. Um. Oh. Sorry.
So I'll say too that I originally was like you, Rich, that I like really, you know, we've got seven people looking at eight people's salaries. I'm in, I I think I was even vocal in our work session before. Um, but I do think that part of what's going on now is people feeling like in the community, feeling like there's and I hate to use the word transparency, but that there's just not enough transparency going on. And I think if if we can find seven individuals to look at eight individual salaries, then it's a win. And I just, it's it's just the, it's the times that we're in right now. And I, I agree with you. I I think it, they'll come back and it'll be probably what the mayor said, you know, give them, you know, four percent or give them, you know, ten percent or whatever, right? But I just think having more people involved with the sausage making might actually help down the road.
Well, I, like I said before,
That's all. I I've changed my tune. That's
Yeah, I don't, I'm not propose, I'm not trying to beat this thing down. I'm just, you know, I'm, because I, I see that there's some upsides. I I really do. But it does, it does seem like, you know, you you kind of want to simplify and not make it more complicated. And this is making more
For me, this is actually going to simplify it for me.
For these people that are on air and for our staff that has to put them together and you know, so it's it is, it is making another layer of bureaucracy. You you can't
It depends on how you look at it. I mean.
Well, I think it's another people between what we already had and what we you know, are proposing. So that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but it's one more step to engagement and outreach. And I I guess that's, you know, I I don't know. I I weigh that in a little bit.
It's, I do.
Yeah. And I, I know, I get it. I'm not saying.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't think any of us are saying, gee, hi, we got to get people in there to give us a big a big raise because I don't think that's what any of us are doing this for.
But we have had to defend before why we think we should have a salary that's at a certain level that would allow people to serve in this position.
Right.
You know, moving forward to a certain level.
True. And we're still gonna have that same argument, though.
I think so, but I think it's helpful to know maybe what, I mean, you could go ask five of your friends, but they're going to have biases too, you know. So this is sort of a more neutral.
That's kind of what I was hoping we don't end up with. We don't have five of our friends or five of the people that that hate us for some reason, you know.
Well, we don't have to take their recommendations if they feel that way.
My point. It's the, so anyways, that I I just throw it out because I I I think it, I think that needs to be
Yeah. Did you have something to say? Sorry.
You're good. I was just going to compliment the conversation, I think. But you're right. It does complicate things, but we're in complicated times and I don't know. I I think it, I think it's a nod in the right direction for trust and transparency. It's unfortunate that it creates more layers, though. Um, have the other cities that have done this kind of thing had a hard time filling those vacancies?
I didn't ask him that question. Um, that it's just, you know, Provo's been doing it for quite a few years. Salt Lake does it and it's just become a matter of course, right? They just, it's just what they do. So.
I think it's one a meaningful way that a citizen could engage in the process. I mean, we've had conversations about that too, where um, some advisory boards or commissions aren't feeling like their work is meaningful. And this one seems like it would be pretty meaningful unless we just always decline their recommendation, then that might be different depending on what that looks like. But um, I think we can't know really until we give it a shot and see. Yeah. And then if you hate it, the majority of us don't agree, then let's let Janine drop it and not have to continue doing this work. She's been doing it for a couple of months.
Yeah.
So if you don't want her to do it, let's let her know.
I think it, I think everybody's got good points. I think sound rationale for a vote either way. And that's, sometimes that's just what we do and it's okay. I was going to ask the question, one thing I hear a lot, both from us and from people in the community is getting involvement from other parts of the city. So I didn't see anything in our discussion about ensuring some broad spread across the
Mm hmm. Different locations.
Yeah, I think the, oh, you mean.
Sorry, I didn't.
Yeah.
Didn't grab my packet. I don't think, I don't.
I think that the final ordinance does include language. Let me just double check.
I might have missed it. It's just something that I was thinking about when we're listening to the discussion. I might have missed it. It's just something that I was thinking about when we're listening to the discussion.
Yeah, it does include language in so far, at, insofar as possible, the commission shall include at least one member. From each of the four municipal districts. Appointment shall become official upon adoption of a resolution. So I mean, there's gonna be attempt, we have had trouble doing that, right? Because some people in certain areas of the, it's harder for people to serve in some areas than it is for others. So.
Okay, thanks for pointing out it. I just thought of it when we were having a discussion.
And maybe this is one area where it's not. It's not as big a commitment, maybe, right? As two, two meetings. Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe three.
Okay.
I, I'm, I, I'm sorry. I did not mean.
Don't, you don't need to apologize to me.
To beat down your work, cause I think your work has been good. I, and, and I really am not opposed. Like.
Yeah, no.
I certainly can see the upside. I just, there's just some things that I thought ought to be aired, so.
No, and I appreciate, I'm not trying to shut down what you're saying. I'm just saying, we do need to let. Staff know at some point whether we really want to consider it or not.
Yeah.
If everybody's feeling like, oh, it's a big waste of time, then.
Put it on an agenda and vote on it. That's okay too.
Well, this is, you know, the, the thing that makes this hard for us though, and I'm kind of just looking back in time a little bit. Um, when we declined any, any pay raise when it was recommended. Because we felt, oh, inflation, taxes, you know, we, we were, we were. Sensitive to the comments of the people and none of us are doing it for the money. And I can't see that ever changing. If, even if this commission says, oh yeah, you guys deserve five percent or eight percent or whatever. And we get that other kind of input, we're probably still gonna turn it down.
Maybe, or we might say, oh, let's compromise and do three, two percent or something, you know, we've taken to consider way consideration both.
I think the, you know, the emotional part of that will still be there no matter what. I think that's.
Yeah, we still have to vote to give ourselves a pay increase, which I think is Councilmember Lopez's problem with the situation. I mean, we could also just not be paid and that would solve the problem too. I mean, that would solve it. If we're not doing it for the money, then. Huh?
Or we could go full time.
Yeah, either way, or get several other people that work to help us answer all our emails. There's many different options that we can do. It's just how we have it set up.
I, I just didn't wanna, I didn't wanna hurt your feelings at all.
Hurt my feelings.
That was not my intent.
Okay, well, I think we'll just put it on an agenda. That's okay and see what happens.
For sure. Thank you so much for all of your work on that, Jeanne. Okay. Oh, well, it looks like now you're gonna be on the hot seat, Councilmember higher. Yeah, for our flag display ordinance. See, I'll, I'll think of some really hard questions for you now.
Oh, don't ask me a lot of hard questions here, right? I think this is something that I, I think is a, is an appropriate thing where we're a public body. Um, we should be making sure that we um, have a standard that. That suits the whole community and not, and isn't a divisive thing at all. And that's kind of what this is intended is just make sure we don't, we don't. Find ourselves setting a precedent that we have to then have every small organization want their flag flown for their, for their thing. That was very, very general of.
It is. I mean, all we have is a description, flag display ordinance, so.
Yeah. I guess you read the ordinance, so it was, it was for American flag, state flag.
No.
But so I should have sent it out to you earlier. I apologize.
You wanna, you wanna read that? It, it was, wasn't very complicated. It was.
Do you have it in front of you?
I don't. I, that's why I, I, a little bit behind the curve here, so.
So yeah, I mean, we can always um, review it and then um, discuss it again too, but you know, just your introduction. Or why you think it's necessary, cause um, you were saying too that there is also an ordinance on the administrative side.
Yeah, they have an administrative um, rural administrative order. And, and uh, this is something that, you know, Gary approached me on. Um, just saying, would the council be interested in this? And so basically it's just uh governing what goes on the flag poles, just the flag poles. And so it just allows for uh the US flag, the Utah flag. It doesn't say which one. It just says the Utah flag.
It should probably be very specific.
The city flag and then police and fire have their own flags, so it also allows for those to be flown on the poles. Um, and then it gives um, direction on in what order they can be flown, you know, obviously there's some standards. Um, about how flags are.
Right.
Are flown, so that, that's included in there. Um, and you know, and it says, so if there's two poles, it's ju- the, the only thing that'd be flown is. Um, the, the US flag and the state flag. If there's three, then you can add the city flag to that. That, I mean, that's basically it. It's pretty, pretty just.
Yeah, the ordinance also gives the mayor um, the authority to order flags to be flown at half staff when. When, when there's a reason to have that and, and define some of the reasons also why that would be the case. Um, I, I think it just is, is a clarity, kind of a, kind of an ordinance, um. That I think we ought to be considering.
This one, this um, only shows us the amendment. It doesn't show us the whole ordinance, so maybe if we can have.
It does, it does define our city flag in there. It's kind of cool.
And so why do you think we need this?
Well, uh. Would, I, I think we, we don't want to be subject to things that tend to have a, a political. Of, of, well, I'm not from.
Are you talking about like the pride flag?
I'm not talking about anything in particular.
Uh huh, just something like that. I'm just trying to give an example, give you an example.
Something that would, some people would like and some people would hate, you know, I don't, I just don't think are.
The new state flag. I'm sorry.
You know, that's one of the, that is the thing that I, I think that is not in our arena to decide what that is. I, I, but you're right. I know it's.
It's controversial.
It, it is controversial.
Just to make sure, this is only based on, or this only pertains to what goes on the flag poles.
Right.
Not, not. Has nothing to do with.
Right. Okay, right, so.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
Like, so for example, you wouldn't be able to put, like, we talked about at some point putting, um, making the new Ogden city flag. Purple, you know, to kind of coincide with, like, make Ogden purple or something like that.
Yeah, that's violate this ordinance, that's for sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So it can go on the pole, but it could go around the square or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this only dictates what's on the poles.
Yeah.
Nowhere else. You, you, I, just my life experience tells me that, you know, once you. If, if, if somebody comes up and says, oh yeah, I got this really good reason to, to fly our, our flag for our purpose. Well, since you do that once, then you gotta do it for everybody. And so this kind of helps to kind of tamp some of that back, sort of why we have an ordinance on how we, how we deal with nonprofits. It, it governs us. It helps us to, to find our way through some of these rocky areas that, that could otherwise get pretty sticky.
Hmm, I guess, yeah, and I, the only reason I brought the pride flag is it's the only one I've ever, I've actually requested it, that we apply that flag. But I just can't think of any other one that a person has asked, but maybe I'm wrong about that. Maybe other groups have asked.
So at the state, do they, so I think that they flew. Uh, a Ukraine.
Correct, maybe.
Flag, or I think. I, I, so I'm, I'm trying to, are we following, you know, what maybe the state, state's doing? I could be wrong on that too. Maybe they just lit up the.
I think, I'm, I wish I could find this. I think it was a state with the governor Cox made. It wasn't necessarily about their flag flying practices, but he was talking about making sure that we're doing things that are. Um, creating unity, not, not creating disunity. And I can't remember, it was earlier in the year, it was first part of the year. I've never been able to find it after I read it the first time.
Yes, yeah, it's a whole lot of stuff on the social media about that, about the unity, but maybe, yeah, or so you're kind of asking. Um, Marsha, that maybe we look at what the state, if the state has ordinances in place around this or.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I can think of some, I don't know.
And what would be the difference? And I apologize. I feel like maybe I'm on another planet today, but um. So if the administration already has an ordinance, why would we also need to pass an ordinance? Or is this a collaboration?
I think this is a collaboration. I think this is.
So it's part of the ordinance that they're creating?
Well, theirs isn't an ordinance. It's just administrative rule. So this would be policy.
I see what you're saying.
This would be policy um, that the council could set.
I'd love to see that administrative rule too, if, you know, just to know what that would be like. That'd be great. Any other questions or comments about that? Welcome.
I just say, I, I can think of examples that would, that are polarizing either way. I mean, like.
Well, in the future, I'm sure there's gonna be some. We don't even know what they are yet. Yeah.
I think the point of what he's saying is the actual flag pole is the sacred. For state and country.
Right. That's pretty well.
I mean, whether it's a pride flag or a thin blue line flag or whatever. Um, it's gotta be others. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if we've been asked to fly one or not. I can't think of an example.
You know, Janine, if we've been approached by that.
I don't know.
I, I'm, I'm kind of where I've come on this thing is that you deal with it before you're approached. It makes it lots easier.
Or the mayor has an expression to say yes or no, you know?
It's like a street renaming.
But yeah, like a street rename. Sure. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. So I think we'll get some more information and then we'll, we'll find out more. Cue, okay. Oh, and this is also a really fun discussion. You got here just in time, Councilmember Lopez. Um, we still haven't completely solidified the leadership, leadership selection um, options. And Janine's worked a little bit on that. Um, I don't know if you want to say anything about it or we just want to have a discussion. Everybody left, right, when I said that, but okay.
Feeling like Glenn here.
I don't care. I guess we get to decide. The three of us get to decide. It's like Glenn's up. No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess you just need direction. If you've had time to think about the, the rotation, I know some of you hated it right away. Some of them had, had sort of, they wanted to think, wanted to think about it for a while. Um, and, and the reason it's, it's important to me is just that we need to make changes to the rules. Your rules and norms no matter what, because I think we still agree. I think most of you agreed. That uh, elections could go, move to February instead of January. Um, so that you don't get that press, you know, the lobbying.
Angela doesn't want to ruin her holidays.
During the holidays and also it, it gives the new council members an opportunity to maybe feel a little bit better about.
Well, a couple of meetings in.
Yeah, I, I think that uh, you know, from, from the options that have been presented. Um. Cause we're gonna have different council members here on January, whatever it is. Um, maybe the safe thing to do would be to take the, rotate it into, into February. Discuss it with the new council members that are, that's gonna affect. And maybe that's.
Yeah.
When you do that, so.
I think that's a good idea. And I, I also thought of the idea of just having the knowledge of like what a rotating schedule looks like. Could make it easy, you know, you could refer to that just to look at it. It doesn't have to be um. Solid rule, but it's like, hey, we just have this example of like, if we just want to give everybody the opportunity to serve. This is who could be next so that we can do that rotation or something like that too. So it could just be a reference.
And I gave that some thought and that would be fine the first time, but if you didn't follow it, if you didn't do it the first time. Then I'm not sure how, you know, that would work.
Yeah.
So.
And honestly, I, I keep going back and forth on it. I think if it just existed that way, then I probably wouldn't have a problem with it at all. Regardless, but then I did have someone make comment that it's sometimes it's. It is a political um, decision who we decide to put in the leader, leadership. And so I think, yeah, maybe for now, we just um. Stick with moving it to February and then we can continue the discussion. Does that sound like a good plan for everybody that's eating right now? Sorry, I ate before. And then we already did put in place the change to the vice chair salary, so it's the same as the chair. Cause we decided, I mean, like even since I've been here, really, it's been more of a partnership than a. Second, first and second tier kind of person, you know, person. So in general, we felt like that was a good decision.
So that will be coming uh, in a budget amendment in a couple of weeks.
And no, Ken has not been pushing for it. I'm, I'm the one that said, let's just do it now if we're gonna do it.
I, 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 I'm totally on board. I totally, that's kind of what I've been saying for a long time is.
Yeah.
Leadership really is getting gypped for the amount of time that is spent.
Yeah.
And I think that uh. You know, that's, that's perfectly reasonable. Whoever's spending almost twice as much time. Uh, you know, being a council member because they're in leadership.
Mm hmm.
Uh, you know, ten percent isn't enough.
On the way that we've split out the committees differently, I think that makes a big difference. I think Janine brought that up as, you know, in the past, maybe the chair did have more additional responsibilities, but. Now we share that more.
Yeah, it's a ton of work, so I'm gonna give it in.
Great. Well, thank you all so much for that. On the other business or anything anybody would like to discuss? I don't think so. We can just have a little break and eat. Do you have any questions about tonight's meeting? Sorry, your mouth is full.
I don't, I don't have questions. Uh, I'm sorry for being late and. Uh, I feel that I might, I might as well just take care of this now. Last week. Um. During our council meeting, I made some remarks to uh, Mara. About the consulting we were doing with Mark Johnson and I felt later, after. Uh, Mr. Ritchie or Councilmember Ritchie spoke about it as well. I felt that I was probably a little. Um, too passionate about what I said and I feel bad. And so I went and talked to. Uh, Mara afterwards and I apologize. And I did want to offer another apology here publicly about it, so. Um, someone told me you can eat warm crow or cold crow, so.
Hey, I think we've all had those moments, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Always feels great.
Great, then maybe we can just have a break for half an hour before we have to go into the next meeting. Thanks, everybody.